If you would go ahead and stand with me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance and have an invocation.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for another opportunity to come before you, Lord, and to come before the citizens of Walton County conducting their business. We pray that you'll just give us the right attitude and the right demeanor to conduct business in the way you would see fit, in Jesus' name. Amen. Real quick, before we get started, if you would, if you haven't already, please either silence your phones or turn them off. We limit interruptions and we can get through the agenda pretty quickly. Also, we will have a nine o'clock time certain end of the meeting. Anything that has not been completed will be moved to the next meeting. And along with that, if you would, as you're speaking or talking, keep in mind that there's a lot of items on the agenda tonight, a lot to get done. Try to limit your comments to three minutes, and hopefully we can get through this as efficiently as possible. Mr. Dice?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Does everybody have an opportunity to read the minutes? They have a motion to accept?
Second.
A second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before we get going too far, I'm remiss in not introducing our new board member tonight. Mr. Frank Anderson's here with us. I'd like to welcome him into the board and to the firing squad. Duck if it starts getting too loud, buddy. But go ahead, Wayne.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We have three continuances and one tabling. If I could, I'll go through those now. Number four on your agenda is the Howland House Bed and Breakfast. They are requesting that be continued until the July 14th meeting at five o'clock at this location.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Mr. Chairman, number five on our agenda is a request to table, which is the Sugar Sands Estates. Staff concurs with the tabling.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number six on your agenda is Watercolor Plan Unit Development of Regional Impact Amendment. Again, a request to continue until the July 14th meeting at five o'clock in this location.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the last one, Mr. Chairman, is the number seven on your agenda, which is the public expansion at Watercolor Crossings. Again, a request to continue until the July 14th meeting at five o'clock in this location.
One more. You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the first item on your agenda is a legislative item. It is the Topsail West PUD overlay ordinance. I'll ask Tim Brown to come forward from staff and brief the planning commissioner on this application.
Good evening. This ordinance allows the Topsail West PUD to spread the uses across the site. Right now, it's Town Center Two and it's VMU, so you can only do those land uses in those districts. This ordinance allows you to do it across the whole project. The agenda references PDU Two, but it should be PDU Three. PDU Two is actually KIA, which you all just recently recommended. I'll answer any questions the board may have.
Board members?
My only question is parking. Is there any issue with the parking?
No. No, they... The current master plan meets all the parking requirements, and if they have to... If they want to change anything, like I suspect down the road, they will change at the corner of West Hewitt and 98, they're showing a convenience store gas station. I think that was planned to be the Murphy's for Walmart, but for whatever reason, they put it on the other side of the road. So when they come in, they're going to have to amend the master plan to change whatever use goes there. But I don't think with Murphy's sitting there, it's going to be a convenience store gas station.
Will there ultimately be a red light there?
I don't think anytime soon. I mean, that's up to DOT. 98's a DOT road, but I doubt it meets the requirements for a traffic light anytime soon.
Okay.
Well, there is a traffic light. There is one. Yeah, there is one at West Hewitt. Yeah, there is one. There is one at West Hewitt.
38 and 98. There's an entrance on the north side to this PUD. It's shared with the Topsail Plaza PUD. It's located to the east. It's yet to be to go vertical.
Yeah, that's either end of this project. Topsail PUD, Topsail West goes from 38 to West... Actually, it goes beyond West Hewitt because the Walmart is included, but basically those lights are at either end of the project.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm April Wilks with the St. Joe Company, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any for me. April Wilks?
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Wilks? We have a motion or discussion.
I didn't see...
We have a motion to approve?
Yes, we'll make a motion, yeah. But we didn't see the plan until we see what was included.
It wasn't included in our...
Well, you have a map, no?
Yeah, I wasn't sure where they were talking about or where it was, so I assumed that...
If I could offer a little bit of clarification, there is nothing proposed to change in this previously approved PUD at this point. They're merely adding the overlay district on top of it, so in the future, they can possibly amend the plan to move uses around outside of the land use districts that are underneath this PUD.
There's no changes included in this. It's just...
No changes included in the development with this action.
Okay. That's why we don't have a map. Nothing planned.
Nope.
So we have a motion?
Second.
You have a second?
I'll take a motion.
Mr. Smith? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the balance of the agenda is quasi judicial items. Can they be sworn in?
Anyone who anticipates testifying or speaking before the commission on any item on the quasi judicial... Doctor, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Would you do us a favor and say your name when you come to the podium and spell your last name? And please let us know that you have been sworn. Commissioners, have any of you received any ex parte communications that would prevent you from rendering a fair and impartial decision?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dice.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. The second item on our agenda is Grand Boulevard Building T. I'll ask Renee Bradley from our staff to brief the planning commissioner on this application.
Good evening. Renee Bradley, Walton County Planning. This is a major development order application submitted by Interlight Engineering, requesting to develop 38,560 square feet of retail commercial space on 1.83 acres, located north of US Highway 98 and south of Grand Boulevard within the parcel 208-308 of the Sand Dustin Development of Regional Impact. 3,740 square feet are stairwells that are being requested as ancillary space, not to be drawn down from the entitlements of parcel 208-308. There's been no public comment received on this project. There are no outstanding technical review comments pending, and the project will be required to do an MPDS permit prior to construction. I'd be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Where exactly is this building, this building T? Is it next to where?
The building S, the one that was built... What was the name?
The most recently built one?
Yes. Yes, sir.
It's right next to that, right?
Yes, sir.
Going on the west side of that building?
Yes. Yeah. There's a lot of building going on. I mean, I'll ask questions of the developer.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Renee. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Jim Martelli with Interlight Engineering have been sworn in. You're correct. Building T is about 38,000 square foot retail within the Grand Boulevard master plan, and in essence, it's a sister building to Building S, which was built right next to it, and came before this board a couple of years ago for approval. That's been constructed. It's occupied, and so this building is just to the west of that, and it'll be, in essence, located or sighted within that portion of the existing parking lot, just to the west of Building S, and with the associated sidewalks and things like that. We propose additional parking on the west side of the building and the north, and we meet all of our concurrency requirements on the project. It meets a comprehensive plan of land development code. I'd be glad to go through those with you if you would like me to, but short of that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
The biggest question I have is, we approved the hotels at last meeting, the one before last? I guess is that directly across the street from where this one's going in? Or farther west?
It's 45-degree angle to the west. Yep.
Okay. How is parking going to be affected there? Because there's not a lot of parking there now on that end of that development. Is more, is additional parking going to be added? Because this is going to take up that whole parking lot.
Well, it doesn't take up the entire parking lot. It takes up a portion of the parking lot. But to answer your question, Grand Boulevard and its hull is a shopping center, and that's how the parking is measured. So to answer your question, we do meet the parking, and there are some future plans to, you know, to provide more parking in the future that will come down the line. But as of right now, we have all the parking we need for the site, and it's in Mr. Howe and Tower Group's best interest to make sure they have the adequate number of parking for their customers.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
How about stormwater?
Stormwater, the building is sitting on an existing parking lot, so there's very negligible difference in stormwater runoff. And we do have a permanent stormwater management facility for this site. It's constructed around nine years ago or so, and it's operational. So we meet the concurrency requirements from that. We're not... It's a very negligible difference in stormwater runoff since it's a parking lot.
It was paid already.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
Has the fire department looked at it and approved?
Yes. They're part of the technical review committee that looks at the project, and they have given us the blessing.
Okay. I didn't see it on the plan. When the fire department's relocated?
The fire department's relocated.
I didn't see it.
Page six.
You said you're going to put additional parking on the north side?
Yes.
Over there?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll open up the public comment portion of the hearing. There is nobody who signed up to speak. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And board members, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second.
Who's the second?
Frank.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, number three on our agenda tonight is Asland Recycle Center, also known as Asland Class III Landfill. I'll ask Renee Bradley from our staff to come and brief the planning commissioner's application.
Commissioners, we have a... Mr. Perry has a conflict, and he will not participate in this discussion. We need to get you...
This is a major development order application submitted by Preble Rish, requesting approval of a four-phase master plan development of a line C and D landfill with a 35,000-square-foot metal building to be used for recycled materials. The project's on 132.95 acres with a future land use of industrial. This parcel received a land use change from public facilities to industrial by large-scale amendment. That was ordinance number 2015-23. There was a slight scrivener's error in that ordinance, and it was amended by ordinance 2015-28. There's no outstanding technical comments. We've received no public comment on this project. Conditions of approval: Prior to construction, the applicant must have all required FDP permits, including dredge and fill permits, permit to construct, operate, modify, or close a solid waste management facility. Prior to construction, the applicant must also have an FDP Northwest Florida Water Management District stormwater permit. Also, an MPDS permit will be required. Unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, staff would recommend all of this. It meets land development code and the comprehensive plan.
It does meet everything?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, ma'am. You're up.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Cliff Nowitzki, Dewberry Preble Rish. As Renee stated, we're seeking approval for a Class III landfill. She mentioned a C and D, but it's actually a Class III landfill, which is the same type of landfill that the county currently operates at Walton Central. Just to kind of give you a kind of brief overview, currently Walton County's Class III landfill has about maybe four years of life left in it at the current rate that it's filling up. Class III material is basically C and D, which you would, if you were demolishing a house, for example, that the materials from a demolished house would go into it. In addition to C and D material, if you're cleaning out your garage, not any kind of paints or toxic chemicals of any sort, but old bicycles, toys, that kind of, things of that nature are Class III. And so the site is 132 acres total. There's really only one other Class III landfill in Walton County, which is out on Highway 20, operated by Waste Pro. That facility is also very close to filling up to capacity, has a short time left in its life as well. And so the site is 132 acres total. There's four proposed phases. We expect probably the life of the facility to be probably 50 to 60 years. The first phase is 7.23 acres. The second phase is 7.3. The third phase is 7.9, and the fourth phase is 7.4. We would be constructing the perk ponds, the stormwater, and Phase One first. The facility is also set up for a recycling center at some point. There's a lot of Class III facilities now that are recycling materials that come into those facilities and being very successful. There's one in Tallahassee that recycles 70% of everything that comes into that facility, and so we hope to one day attain that type of goal. There's currently no recycling of Class III materials anywhere in Walton County or really any counties until you get over towards Pensacola. And so one of our goals is to build the facility and put together a recycling program as part of it where we will be able to reuse a lot of the materials.
What kind of capacity would a recycling facility there have?
The building itself that we have shown on our site plan is 35,000 square feet, and so we would guess that we could handle probably somewhere between 5 and 800 tons a day. It's a pretty large quantity that we could handle. Probably will not start off building 35,000 square feet. It will probably be smaller. But the key to the recycling business, if you want to call it, is having customers that need those end products. And so the products that get recycled are carpeting, wood chips, rock, and dirt. Those are probably the four biggest ones. And the largest one in the Tallahassee market right now is carpeting. So they recycle all of the carpeting that comes into their facilities and the padding as well. We do have 200-foot buffers from the wetlands all the way around the entire site. We have no wetland impacts as part of our proposed project. We also have 50-foot landscape buffers around the project, and our stormwater for the site has been designed so that we handle 100-year storm pre-post. We were required by county and DEP to handle 25-year pre-post. We went ahead and handled 100-year pre-post. So we're providing treatment for significantly more than what would be required on a normal stormwater facility. So those are kind of the highlights. The big change in landfills is Class III and C and D facilities in the past did not have to be lined. DEP changed their regulations a couple of years ago, and so this facility will be lined with a 60-mil polyethylene liner that actually gets welded in place and tested. The facility on Highway 20 is not lined, and the county's facility is not lined. And so between the 60-mil liner and the 45-feet-thick clay confining unit that is below where the landfill's going to go, there's very significant protection to any kind of issues related to groundwater.
So 45-foot thick?
Yes, sir. 45-foot-thick dense clay layer is below the entire landfill. It's... The groundwater is very, very well protected at this site.
You have no need for a leachate lagoon?
We don't have a leachate lagoon. What we're doing with our project is we're doing wetland treatment ponds, where the leachate goes through a series of ponds that are heavily vegetated. When it gets to the end of that series of ponds, it gets tested. If it tests adequately, it goes to a percolation pond. If it does not test adequately, it goes back into the headworks of the treatment train. And so we have to provide that test data to DEP as well. If for any reason there's a problem of any sort, that material would be pumped and then hauled to a wastewater treatment facility in case there was any kind of problem. And so there's kind of a repetitive safety in that aspect of the facility.
Anybody have any questions?
I got a question. You said your base is high-decked?
There's a 45-foot layer of clay below the facility. It's existing, not nothing we built.
Did y'all drill that to confirmation?
Yes, sir. We had approximately $100,000 worth of geotechnical testing done on this project, and we've been working on it over a year and a half.
When y'all put poly down on top of the base, were y'all scoring bennett also?
Yes, sir. There's gas venting through the whole thing. Yes, sir.
How are you going to handle the water runoff and rain and stuff? Y'all going to be able to collect all that and dispose of it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, our stormwater, the stormwater permits are already handled. Anything that lands on the liner will be handled through our leachate system.
Anybody else? Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
We will note from the public portion of the hearing, we have nobody that's signed up to speak. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
I'd like to read you if you have more things.
Mr. Carter, do you want the commission to enter this into evidence?
Sir?
Do you want the commission to enter these documents into evidence?
Yes, and pass it, pass them down, if you will.
Sure. Would you give Mr. the staff a copy? Well, Kerry's doing that. Do y'all have any objections to the documents? Mr. Chairman, I would recommend you accept them into evidence as objectors exhibit one.
Accepted. Mr. Carter, were you sworn in?
Mr. Carter, were you sworn in earlier?
No.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
True, exactly.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, do you have copy four, Mr. Nowitzki?
He can have mine.
Everybody get one? Can I have an extra?
Okay, Mr. Carter.
Okay. If you will, please refer to page four of the attachment that I presented. This, to me, is a dignified restriction on the parcel described, the 132-acre parcel described. Item Three states that Asland shall implement an appropriate reclamation plan similar to the one implemented on the Walton County approved mining operation located adjacent to the property. I think this property was purchased in '08. To date, there's been no said reclamation plan on this property, which basically involves grassland revegetation, which in effect presents, prevents runoff turbidity. Turbidity into a stream or a creek is what kills a shellfish life. So environmentally, I'm concerned about the creek and the shellfish life, which is a premise of all the other ecosystems in the creek, which is a microcosm of the river. So that's my environmental concern in a nutshell with that. Item Four leaves Walton County liableless in the way that this document is presented for pass and review. And a reason I say that is there is no core drilling been done on this site to verify toxic chemicals which present a carcinogenic effect to my groundwater. My well that I drink from is five miles east of this property. There's been no engineering study on hydrologic percolation of leachate from this site or previous leachate from this site, whatever the county did with it. It said in this report that all they had was a dirt pit. But if there was any other activity, I would certainly think that Walton County would want a comprehensive report based on engineering protocol, and there is a protocol for that, with engineering standards to core drill this site and verify that there are no existing hazardous waste materials that have leaked into the ground and on top of this 50 feet of clay base we're talking about here. So the next item on page five, Walton shall allow Asland and any successors and interests to the property to continue to operate and utilize the property in the same manner and for the same usage in which Walton has operated and utilized the property. I find no evidence or mention that Walton ever utilized this property for a Class III landfill or a Class II or a Class I. And my concern environmentally about these type of systems with a 60-mil liner not specified what the pH range resistance is on this liner. Is it hapalon? 60-mil is less than 1/16th of an inch thick. What's the chemistry make? What's the pH parameters of this liner? Will it handle 2 to 7, 2 to 10? You know, on pH, we range from zero at sulfuric acid to 14 to 50% caustic. So this leachate chemistry that sits in these cauldrons and collects rainwater and runs off into these unlined ponds, vegetated, for whatever reason that is, this stuff can destroy this liner in short order if it's high or low pH, and if this liner is not designed to withstand that, and I see no specifications on that liner. My other item of concern is on page five of 12, on the description of the project, where you have project analysis, parcel numbers. The first property appraised or parcel number is, in fact, 132.95 acres, which is what's proclaimed to happen here. The second parcel number is 4.57 acres. The third parcel number, there's no record found. When you query that number, it does not come up as a good number. So that's concerning to me, to know exactly what we're talking about here. With attention to detail, I don't understand why an invalid number was presented here on this document. That pretty well concludes what I have to say, and I would certainly hope that you would give consideration to this OR book and page document memorandum of agreement attached to the deed with the legal description, and verify that... to the deed with the legal description, and verify that it is valid. Are we going to honor the integrity of this document? Or is there a methodology here that we're going to pass by fast these stipulations?
Okay, thank, well, I appreciate it, Mr. Carter. Let us talk about it.
Sir?
Thank you very much. Cliff, do you want to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of the points that he brought up with regard to the reclamation plan. The reclamation plan was to regrade some of the slopes that were the result of the excavation by the county at the pit. The DEP and Water Management District typically, typically require a three-to-one slope that is grassed. Over the years and years of excavation by the county out of the pit, a lot of the side slopes were straight up and down. And so I think that's what he's referring to about the reclamation plan. We do have Water Management District personnel that are out there on the site very regularly. The grading plan that we have for the Class III facility addresses all the slopes. And so as far as any kind of issues with the DEP or the Water Management District related to the reclamation of the site, they haven't brought any of those issues to our attention as being a problem. We've also, as I mentioned earlier, we've already submitted to the DEP for this project. And so if they had any issues with the grading plan or with our method of stabilization, I'm sure that they will provide comments to that effect.
Those permits all have to be obtained before you do anything anyway?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't affect what we're doing here tonight?
That's right. Yes, sir. Yep. And we're expecting probably, you know, probably three to four months before it makes it through the permitting process with DEP. With regard to contamination, the county actually never dumped any materials at the site. There's not been any dumping of any sort at the site. The only materials that are at the site currently is one corner of the former pit has clearing debris, which is trees, vegetation, has been used in one corner of the pit, and that's also permitted. There is no, nothing has ever been dumped in the site by the county. It was strictly used as a dirt pit. As I mentioned before, we've had extensive geotechnical testing. We've also installed some monitoring wells, and the geotechnical testing went down to depths of 80 to 100 feet. There were no buried materials found. It was all found to be virgin soils. So we don't have any reason to believe that anything was ever dumped at the site.
Right. All that stuff will be looked at as you go through the permitting process. That's not really part of our reviews.
Yes, sir.
It's DEP.
And then the comment about the pH of the material, the liner material, we had to submit specifications to the DEP for review that, excuse me, includes all the testing that's done on the liner itself to prove that it will handle the conditions that are required for a Class III CND, I'm sorry, a Class III landfill. And so we've provided those to DEP already for review. It is a pretty significant document of the testing that the manufacturer we've already selected has given us to submit to the DEP. And then the last comment with regard to parcel numbers. Initially, we had our septic tank and a well located on a separate parcel, which is the four-point something maker parcel he mentioned. We're not doing that anymore. Everything is included on one parcel, which is the 132 acres. So there's, there's no improvements at all on any parcels except for the 132 acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any questions for?
Yeah, one question, please.
Cliff, just a second.
With regarding operating this thing, will there be layers of sand, lifts of sand between layers of debris?
Yes, sir. They're required to have cover, they're required to have cover on it weekly. So they have to put a cover on it at the end of every week. And so normally, they put a foot to two feet of cover when they're done.
And will there be some cover over the liner before it's actually used?
Yes, sir, it is. It requires an 18-inch-thick layer, 12 inches of sand, I'm sorry, 18 inches of sand over the top of the liner before you're allowed to put any kind of equipment on it. Yes, sir.
I have a question also. You were talking about the bore pit, and you were talking about the depth of the clay. Is that for the whole bore pit or just certain areas of the bore pit with the clay that being?
We found it pretty consistent. It's actually thicker in some areas. The thinnest area that we found it was at 45 feet. And so there's, I want to say there was 10 borings done, but it was somewhere in that neighborhood.
My second question is, the DEP, does they not strictly regulate all and monitor the activities of these landfills?
Like you can't believe.
That's what I thought my first question was, close and watch.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Who gets to use this service?
Well, the owner will have a rate for the public to use it, and the gates will be open. And so it's not going to be just for one company to use. It's going to be open to the public. There's going to be spotters that are trained on what materials are allowed to come there and what materials are not allowed to come there. And so if it's Class III, the public will be allowed to use it. If they show up with something that's not Class III, they'll have to go to Walton Central or Spring Hill or some other place. But it's not a private facility just for the owners to use themselves. It will be open to the public.
Any other questions? We'll close, we'll close the public portion of the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve on the conditions of the approval from our entities. And also, prior to construction, everything has been required by DEP, it's been completed, and just the approval process to be done correctly.
Yeah, they have to do that anyway, so. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, four, five, six, and seven of our contingent are tabled, which brings us to number eight on our agenda, which is the Culvers Restaurant. I'll ask Tim Brown to come forward and brief the planning commission on this item.
This is a major development order application submitted by Emerald Coast Associates requesting approval to develop a 5,080-square-foot restaurant with drive-through and covered patio, outdoor seating on 1.54 acres with the future land use of coastal center mixed use. It's located on the north side of US 98, east of Professional Place and west of Holiday Road. They went through a land use change to go from coastal center to coastal center mixed use so they could have the drive-through. This went to the DRB last week. They had requested two deviations, one for color for the trim and the awnings. They have their own color, Culvers Blue. And they also requested a building material deviation for cultured stone. The cultured stone was approved, the blue was not. It was, that portion of it was continued. But we recently approved the new Muncil book. The county commission passed that ordinance. So they found a color in the book, so they're going to withdraw the color deviation. And the DRB moved the project forward. They approved the project contingent upon the color, but they're, like I mentioned, they're going to withdraw that portion of the request, and they found a Muncil-approved color. They have a proportionate fair share requirement of $99,820. And unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, this project will be consistent with the Walton County Land Development Code and Conference of Plan. I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
Congratulations to staff.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates. B-U-R-G-I-S, and I have been sworn. I think Tim did a good job of introducing the project. This is located near the northwest intersection of Holiday Road and Highway 98, immediately west of the Smiths Antiques building. It is a Culvers Restaurant, which is a similar, as best I can describe, to like a McAllister's deli. It's upscale fast food, if you will. We feel the project is, is well-designed. It meets the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. One thing I did want to just put on the record is we are, I've talked to engineering, we are going to discuss the proportional fair share, just to make sure that that number's right. Our number was somewhat different from theirs, but it is what it is.
I bet yours was lower than theirs, wasn't it?
It certainly was. But as I said, if one of us overlooked something, we'll, we'll get that resolved, and Preble Rich has agreed to meet with us to do that. If there's any questions from the board, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Board members?
My only concern is traffic going in and out of 98, turning in, turning out.
Right. I'd like to walk you through that. And there are actually some changes to those driveways that should be mentioned. Our plan, of course, inter-
Let me interject, just, I failed to mention, you have two handouts. Smith Antiques does not want them to use this cross access, and the bank does not want them to use the western cross access. I failed to mention that. You have those handouts in front of you, and I'm sure Dean will go into more detail about that.
That's what I was just about to get to. We originally had it designed with, of course, along the scenic corridor, cross access is encouraged. And we accommodated that request with, if you will, an effort to create a frontage road across the property. Smiths Antiques has agreed to honor the connection on our east side of the property, southeast corner of the property. That will allow access out to the Holiday Road light. We will also have our own ride-in, ride-out access from DOT. That's under review, and we've had favorable comments from DOT. I have no concern that that won't be granted. The two accesses that Tim referenced are the western access on the southwest corner that will be basically just stubbed out and not connected to the bank to the west. And on the northeast corner, the Smiths Antiques, that will also just be a turnout that will not connect to their, their property. We're going to do those turnouts for, for two reasons. One, getting out of the parking space, enough room for somebody to, to back into. And also, should those owners, potentially new owners of those properties, if they're ever sold, wants to connect, we can make that connection in the future.
Why would they not want to connect?
You've got me. But I have had discussions with those owners. Actually, the, the bank is, is here tonight, and I spoke with Mr. Hugh Smith from Smiths Antiques, as well as the owner of this project, Mr. Randy Smith. And he does not want that northern connection. I honestly believe another reason for this turnout on the north end is Mr. Smith may decide, you know what, that's not such a bad idea. And should he do that, we're more than willing to make that connection. Of course, we can't force somebody to allow us to connect to him, but we certainly want So in summary, we do have a route to the Holiday Road light across Smiths Antiques along the southern parking lot, drive aisle.
That makes, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it is an eat-in restaurant and a drive-through?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not like a Sonic or anything?
No, it's, it's primarily an eat-in restaurant. The, the drive-through is active, you know, for pickups and so forth, but correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, it's primarily a sit-down, eat-in restaurant.
I've never been to one, so I'll look forward to it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of the hearing. Got a couple people sign up.
I was sworn in. And Honey Harris, I'm representing both Community Bank and also the Community Plaza Owners Association that is bordering the property. To answer your question about why we're not interested in it, you would think we would, we would be doing double backflips. The issue is, is when they come onto the property there, our traffic flow is, it would, it would butt into the traffic flow, and then the only way they could really get out is go around our bank building, which is the only exit is through the drive-through. So one day, we'll probably be back when I wish we could, but right now, we, we just are worried about safety and, and the traffic flow.
That's understandable.
So let's answer that question.
Okay, thank you. Randy Smith? Oh, it's you, okay. You want to talk?
Sir, I don't have any, unless you all have any questions for me, I'd be glad to address them.
Not right now. Okay. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Go ahead and close the public portion. Commissioners? Any questions?
No questions.
Well, to her point, is there anything that we should say in the approval process that they make consideration on the traffic?
Consideration that that connection not be made, because it's still, it's still on the site.
They can still do it. That's not something we can dictate that they have to do. They can talk about it.
The way the code, the way the code is written-
We can actually recommend beg, prod, but we can't require cross-access. That's, that's the way the code's written.
We can recommend it, certainly.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve, make that recommendation.
Make the recommendation to request that they consider, reconsider the cross-traffic?
Correct.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chairman number nine on our agenda is Seven Palms, Inlet Beach. I'll ask Tim Brown to come and present his major development order to the planning
This is a major development order application submitted by Core Engineering and Consulting requesting approval for the development of five single-family lots on 1.26 acres with the future land use of neighborhood infill and an Inlet Beach neighborhood plan designation of residential. It's located at 160 Pompano Street in Inlet Beach. You have a handout. We, I realized there was some errors in the staff report. This portion of the, of Inlet Beach under the Inlet Beach neighborhood plan, neighborhood plan is four units per acre. The staff report you have says up to eight. Actually, it's four in this portion of Inlet Beach. The ISR in your staff report says five. It's actually six. Infill is six, so they, they're, they're okay. And I took out, under the conditions of approval, the approval that shows meeting the .5 ISR, because in, in infill, it's .6. There are some other conditions relating to the turtle lighting and the white sands protection zone. They have a proportionate fair share requirement of $17,730. They're buying out one side of the sidewalk, which is $8,010. And unless, unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the project will be consistent with the Walton County Conference of Plan and Land Development Code. I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
I'm kind of confused on where the location is.
It's on Pompano Street in, in Inlet Beach.
South of 98?
Yes.
Can you put up the, is the aerial up?
So that looks north.
That's not the right area.
I didn't see that.
Well, if you look, if you look at the aerial, you can see that it's-
Why'd you have that?
That it's-
So there's a beach in it?
It's south of Highway 98.
I don't think it's five.
It's just, it's immediately south of Eagles Landing subdivision.
Five, same family lots.
Eagle Landing is immediately to the north.
Mm-hmm. Didn't include one stone.
Yeah.
Yeah, under the Inlet Beach neighborhood plan, most of, Inlet Beach, south of 98, not all of it, but most of it, south of 98, is four units per acre. Maximum of four units per acre.
Right.
And this is what?
This is four, but their, their request is at 3.97.
What was the, you wrote up, something about lighting and the turtles?
Yeah, most of the conditions, if you look at the conditions of approval, they, they refer to the lighting, which is the, the turtle lighting, the wildlife protection. And then there's, there's some conditions in there about permitting and, and the white sands protection zone. Pretty much everything. Well, in this case, south of 98, but mostly south of 30A. Anything south of 30A is in the white sands protection zone.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Ed Stanford with Core Engineering Consulting. I've been sworn in. Not a whole lot to talk about with this project. It's fairly simple. We've met all the standards and requirements of the inlet beach neighborhood plan and the Land Development Code and the Conference of Plan. We are handling a hundred-year storm instead of twenty-five-year storm in our stormwater. That's, it's good that our, we have some decent soils out there that perk well, so we can, we are allowed to do this in an exfiltration system. The, we're familiar with the white sand protection zone. We know that's a condition of it, it's on our plans. The developer is familiar with that and we're also familiar with all of the turtle lighting and glass requirements that goes along with the construction of the buildings as well. So with that being said, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Oh, how tall is the building's gonna be?
Well, we're allowed four stories or fifty feet. We don't intend to do that, but we probably will be three stories. Okay, so probably up to thirty-five feet or thirty-eight feet, something like that. Inlet beach is a growing and ever-changing area and you have a lot of one-story masonry, nineteen-forties shelters, and then much of the new stuff is two and most likely three stories. And that's where things are going there, it seems like.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Can we open up the public comment portion of the hearing? There's nobody who's signed up to speak. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Commissioners?
I make a motion that we pass. I'm very happy to see that they only wanted to approve the smaller amount of lots to be developed instead of too many.
Is conditioned upon all the conditions listed in here, right?
Right.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that. And I'll just add that I'm confident that they'll do a good job.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chairman number ten, our agenda is the Good News United Methodist Church. Again, I'll have Tim Brown come up and brief the planning commission.
Finance chair. This is just for the preschool.
This is a major development order application submitted by Okano and Associates requesting the approval to add 2,936 square feet to an existing preschool on 6.85 acres with a future land use of village mixed use. It's located at 4747 U.S. Highway 98 West. It previously went to the design review board for a color deviation and a deviation for the sidewalk along Highway 98 and the scenic corridor buffer. Those were approved. It went back to the DRB last week for a roof pitch deviation. That was also approved and the DRB approved the project. Since it's an existing preschool, they're not really adding any additional traffic, so there's no proportionate fair share requirement. There's no, there's no conditions associated with this project. So unless other evidence is presented to the contrary, the project will be consistent with the Walton County Conference of Plan and Land Development Code. I'll entertain any questions the board may have.
So there's no additional traffic projected at all?
No.
One trip. One trip.
One trip.
They're, I don't know if it's gonna expand the number of students, but they're expanding the existing preschool. I think they're just making more room, but it may, it may add more students, I don't know.
It would seem reasonable, it would, but...
Twenty-nine hundred square feet, you would think that would mean more preschools.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is John Nash with Okano and Associates. We're the engineers for this project. Tim summarized it pretty well. I can tell you in addition to that, that my understanding is that this is primarily gonna be used to move the preschool from inside the existing building to a building adjacent to it. So I can't say for certain that it's not gonna increase the size or any of that, but I can tell you that the main intent is to move the school to free up space inside the sanctuary building.
That makes sense.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions, Joe, I have.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Again, we'll open up the public portion of this hearing. No one has signed up. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners?
I make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion. And a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Perry, you gonna join us for a couple things tonight or not?
Chairman number eleven, I believe we've got a court port needs to set up, so it might take a little few minutes to get that set up.
Let's take about a ten-minute break and then we'll come back.
Yeah, I think that's the only thing I gotta miss from here on out.
Gulf Place. Hi there, you can. I don't know what's going on.
All right, one minute, Carrie.
That's okay.
Can we go ahead and call the meeting back to order? And I believe we're on item number eleven.
Chairman number eleven is the Gulf Place PUD Amendment. This is an amendment to the Gulf Place PUD, obviously, which we discussed before. It is a, this is a major development order application for this. I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to briefly just brief the board on some of the details of this, but this is something that we've heard before several months ago. And it went to the Board of County Commissioners and they requested a change to it, and this is the culmination of that change. Essentially, they were asking to remove the hotel and make it multifamily condominiums. That was the end result of this whole process. But again, I'll ask Mac to come up and just give you a brief overview of the details of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Wayne did a wonderful job of saying almost everything I was going to say. But this is a proposed Gulf Place PUD amendment that converts 26,375 square feet of commercial space previously proposed as a fifty-unit hotel to be converted to a thirty-unit residential condominium to be developed within parcel twenty, within the existing footprint of the hotel building that this board previously recommended approval on. The only change in this particular amendment is, to the project you heard before, is that the fifty-unit hotel will now be a thirty-unit condominium within the same building footprint, height, et cetera. And they're adding one additional parking space.
Does it change the requirements for parking?
They added one parking space. Now, there are additional parking spaces proposed along County Road 393 that are not part of the required parking. And that would only be installed if the BCC approves the use of the right-of-way for the addition of those spaces. There are another eight spaces that the applicant has committed to provide within the existing Gulf Place development as an accommodation to the Owners Association there at Gulf Place. Those spaces are not required to meet the parking requirement for this development either. That is another goodwill gesture for the community. And that's essentially this project.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mac. Mr. Theriaak?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is David Theriaak. I represent the applicant. Pleasure to be here. I'll be very brief because Mac and Wayne said almost everything I was gonna say. If you could put up on PowerPoint just the first slide, please. Just wanna remind you what this project was. We had condos on one lot, a hotel across on the other lot. When we, and we were fortunate to get a unanimous recommendation of approval from y'all almost a year ago. When we got to the county commission, the county commission said that they would prefer to see additional condominium units rather than the hotel. So we had a cycle back through. We need to do a PUD amendment to address the number of dwelling units in the PUD. And then we needed to do a site plan tweak to convert from the hotel to the condos. Same footprint, same stormwater. The only change, other than going from use of hotel to condo, is we added a parking space. And I've got an engineer here if you have any questions, but nothing else has changed. Stormwater hasn't changed and we're in the same footprint, the same footprint of the hotel when we would ask for y'all to approve us. Thank you.
Any questions?
Did your parking requirements go down?
I'll have Jamie Eubanks, the engineer, answer that.
I do. It's like you couldn't miss me if I wasn't here. Jamie Eubanks with Jenkins Engineering. To answer your question, Mr. Perry, 134 was originally required, 135 is actually required now. That was the difference in the fifty unit versus thirty unit. So we had an extra handicap space previously. We converted that handicap space and the island from one handicap to two.
So it went up even though the units went down, number of units went down?
It did. There's a different parking requirement for each hotel, for example, is 1.1 per, and parking for the condos is a little more intense.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. We'll open up the public comment portion of the hearing. And Ms. Mary Nielsen?
May I go later, please?
You sure can. Cindy Stenberg? Did I say your name right?
Cindy Stenberg. I have been sworn. I am the association manager for Gulf Place Community, or actually, I'm the owner of the management company. And I've just been asked to read this statement into the record. It is written by the Gulf Place Community Board of Directors. The subject is Gulf Place Parcels 19 and 20, the PUD amendment. It says, "Dear Commissioners, Gulf Place Community Owners Association is aware of the Lagoon Manor development proposal to amend the Gulf Place Community PUD to allow seventy condominium units and 2,150 square feet of commercial space. If this proposal is approved by the county commission, the Gulf Place Community Owners Association, Inc., Board of Directors, desires that the Conformant County Commission add the condition or the clarification that no further development entitlements exist or may be granted within the Gulf Place PUD." And it's signed by Ernie Durico, who's our board president. I would like to point out that I do, I have managed Gulf Place since inception and we are aware that a long time ago, there was deeded some of our density into several lots along 393 that are not part of the Gulf Place Community Association per se, but we are aware that those deeded rights do exist.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Nielsen, you're the only other one signed up.
My name's Mary Nielsen, N-I-E-L-S-O-N. I am one of the owners with partners of the property to the north that Cindy just mentioned, and we are not a member of the association. It is in our deed that we do not have to be a member of the association. And our entitlements were given to us prior to when I purchased, when we purchased, they were given to the seller who we purchased from, from Gus Andrews in Gulf Place. And ours are listed on our deed and the county is aware of those entitlements.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else wish to speak on this? We will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question concerning the statement she made about no more development being done. Are there any more parcels out there that are supposed to be developed in the future?
Once parcel nineteen and twenty are developed, really, there's just green space left. There are several, Gulf Place has multiple parcel identities. There's an amphitheater, there's a north lawn, so there are other green spaces within our community.
So if they did any additional development, it would take some of the green space out that has been set up for green space and to bring people into the development, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I may add, it would require an amendment to the PUD.
So this is the end, the last piece that you're saying is to be developed? Okay.
That's our understanding, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Take action?
Motion to approve. Can we add that condition on there?
I'm a little concerned about adding that condition. I mean, we feel fairly very confident this is it, but this particular putt has had an interesting history in terms of entitlements, to put it mildly. So I would hate to, you put that on there and then it turn out, ten years from now, somebody found ten units somewhere. I just, I'm just not comfortable saying that's a recommendation, but I feel fairly confident that's the case. And I think planning is fairly confident that's the case. We, we have, and to Mr. Theriaak and his clients' credit, we, they have assisted and we have looked at these entitlements for a year now to try to make sure that not only did they have enough, but that, what was gonna be left after this, but it has something of a checkered history with some conveyances, so I would prefer you not do that at this point.
And this PUD goes back to, I believe, 1996. It's one of the oldest PUDs we have and it's, you know, we've, it has had a long life. But as was mentioned earlier, any kind of change to the PUD, any new development would have to have a PUD amendment, which the board will still have the purview.
It would still have to come back through the process.
Absolutely. Even if there are entitlements left, yes.
Right.
That's correct.
So what's your motion?
Motion to approve with conditions.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Chairman number twelve is a companion to the previous item as heard. It is Gulf Place Lots 19 and 20 condo layout. I'll ask, again, I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to brief the planning commission on this particular application.
Thank you, commissioners. This is also a major, a separate major development order application, which is the exact same project we just spoke about on the PUD amendment. This is actually the project application. In total, it includes, after the BCC approves the PUD amendment, it will involve seventy condominium townhome units in addition to the small amount of commercial space on Lot 19. I think it's 2,150 square feet. Again, this project is the same footprint of both the previously proposed condominium building and the fifty-foot, or the fifty-unit hotel that this board unanimously approved previously. All we're doing again is we're converting the hotel to condominium units, adding one additional parking space for the impact of that conversion.
Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
David Theriaak for the applicant. Again, Mac and Wayne have stated everything that I was gonna say and I'll incorporate by reference everything I said on the last item. This is necessary to accommodate the board's request to go from hotel to condos. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public portion of the hearing. Ms. Nielsen? Okay, anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners? We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on our agenda is number 13, Walton County, County Director 95, 30A abandonment. Again, I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to come forward and brief the planning commission on this abandonment request.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a project the county's been working on for more than two years. We first had this project at TRC just about two years ago. It's proposed abandonment on the south side of the right-of-way of County Road 30A, immediately east of the intersection of County Road 395 and 30A. In fact, this property is being swapped for another parcel on the north side of County Road 30A to accommodate the intersection improvements for the 30A, 395 intersection. The project had been held up while waiting for an agreement with regard to the parcels on the north side. That agreement's been reached, and we're ready to move forward with the petition for abandonment.
Okay. Any questions?
Can you share with us where that abandonment exchange for land is?
It's gonna be, it will be mirrored on the north side, and actually, the county's getting about 150% of what they're giving up on the south side. So we're actually getting a little bit more property on the north side.
How'd you work that out?
Took two years. Mr. Davis can probably speak to that a little bit more directly.
That's a good point. I, I think the biggest thing was that we were going to keep, at least for a number of years, the bike path on the north side of the road, not, not along the south side. That was a huge consideration by the folks on the south side. And it's going to be a, a large improvement in terms of traffic, we hope, because there will be turning lanes on each side, plus a turning lane on the north side, and it will be a signalized intersection.
Oh, really?
Yes. We anticipate it being a signalized intersection.
Now, do you think that's gonna work?
You know, yes and no. I mean, all the traffic engineers like.
Roundabouts.
Roundabouts. I'm not sure it's something that residents like particularly, so the short answer is no. I will tell you, the one condition we are asking for is that this abandonment be conditioned upon the improvements actually being undertaken. In other words, if for some reason, and I cannot for the life of me anticipate what that reason would be, that we don't undertake the improvements on, at the intersection, that the properties would revert back to the county.
That would be up to the county to make the improvements, though, right?
Right. Well, yes, and, and again, abs, you know, we may have a depression, and we don't have the money between now and then. I don't know. I just want to make sure that the abandonment is not, not, that the abandonment is conditioned upon the, the construction of the actual improvements.
Okay.
Excuse me, could you just explain the improvements, give an overview?
Well, essentially, the road is gonna shift slightly to the north. There's gonna be the addition of a, a turning lane, and the, the multi-use path adjacent to the roadway on the north side's gonna be adjusted a little bit further to the north.
Where will the turn lanes be, Tim?
Excuse me?
Where will the turn lanes actually be?
If you can see, there's a, a right turn lane heading north on 395, which would be westbound, turning north. And that's essentially where we're going to gain some property on the north side.
So nothing should be done on the other side of the intersection?
The burying underground utilities and relocating utilities, but most of the work is on the east side of the intersection.
There will be some widening and, but, but probably not enough room, given what's the...
Another turn lane over there?
Probably not. We, we haven't finished the design necessarily.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Wait a minute, we're still on the, does nobody, does nobody, there is nobody?
It's a county's.
It's a county's disposal.
That's correct.
Anybody wants to speak? Yes, sir.
Do you softly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name's David Smith, and I live a couple blocks from this intersection. Lived here for a number of years, and this project is doomed to failure. And for us to give away the right-of-way on the south side for, correct me if I'm wrong, 10 years?
I think that's right. I don't have the agreement in front of me. I think that's right.
And there's another stipulation in there to the effect of, unless, something to the effect of safety?
I'm sorry, I didn't bring the agreement with me. Maybe I should have, but I understand we can't remove the prop, I'm sorry, move the bike path to the south side for a 10-year period absent some health and safety reason. Yes, sir.
And the, the question I have is, what tips a scale for safety?
I would leave that to engineers. I, that's what they ask for, so...
Well, I think that needs to be spelled out, whether that requires a death, paralyzing, maiming, whatever, because if anyone travels this intersection, this will not work. The bike path has to go to the south side, and until that happens, 395 and 30A will be a bottleneck that will never get resolved. And this is the first time tonight I heard of any possibility of a signal light there, but even with a signal light, they barely abide by it when there's a sheriff at that intersection. And what they're proposing is the right turn lane doesn't kick in, I mean, it's only how many cars long, very short. Now, when that road backs up to Eastern Lake going, going west, okay, that right turn lane is gonna have minimal impact whatsoever, and when they make the right-hand turn, and even though you're supposed to stop before you make your right-hand turn, I can guarantee you that people are not making a stop, and they're swinging around that corner, and what are they gonna come upon? The bikes and the pedestrians crossing over the road. And I've talked for years to the TDC, because they're in charge of the bike path, and they're in complete agreement that the bike path really needs to be on the south side of 38 the entire length. And until this is accomplished, but doing this and spending the amount of money that's gonna be spent on this, the right turn, and then immediately after you turn right going north on 331, what do you come across? The left-hand turn into V and the Seagrove Market. Now, it just isn't gonna work. And I will gladly sit down, because I've lived there long enough, I've seen the intersection, I've waited in traffic. When V used to be open, I sat there and looked out the window and saw that intersection. And it's, it's a real problem, and I think if they move forward this, it needs to be spelled out exactly what the tipping point is for safety issues, because I think, before you even go in there, there's a safety issue, and I challenge anyone not to deny that there's a safety issue with the design of this.
What were your recommendations?
Bike path to the south of 30A. That eliminates, when you put it to the south, that eliminates the bottleneck that bikes and pedestrian cause at that intersection.
But that was a condition of the agreement, so they weren't gonna get the property to do anything with, apparently, if they...
Well, well, by, by putting that bike path to the south, you wouldn't need the right turn lane. Right now, the biggest problem we have at that intersection is pedestrians and bicyclists not obeying the law. And even with a deputy there, which I think it was last year that the commissioners said, okay, we've gotta do something, so let's put some, during peak periods, put their, that didn't even work.
Well, I think that they're trying to address it and trying to figure out a way to make everything work, but, I mean, BCC, you know, BCC will have to make that decision.
Yeah. Well, I'm just...
Okay. I appreciate it.
You know, I'm telling you the reality.
I can appreciate your passion and understand what you're talking about, but...
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, everyone's gonna be sitting around when a child gets rung over or whatever occurs at that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, David, where does that pick up? The bike path on the south side, doesn't it start in front of Whiskey Bravo?
Yeah. It needs to come...
So you're only talking about those few houses that are right there south of 30A?
Mm-hmm.
What, the Stevenson's and, and just, what, 10 houses at the most?
Right.
Yeah, I, I just, thank, thank you, Mr. Smith. I, I just wanna point out that the commissions already have voted to approve that agreement, so we couldn't change it at this point if we wanted to, but yeah.
Well, that's not for the commissioners. I mean, that's not, us is, we're just looking at code and does it meet the code.
And I don't wanna testify, but that, that agreement has been...
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners?
I don't think this is soup yet.
No? No, no.
It's not soup.
They still got a commission, they got a commission meeting to go through, so...
Well, there's a lot more work, and in my opinion, there's a lot more work needs to be done with this.
I, I don't listen.
I'm just glad to see them trying to do something, because those of us who travel on 38 and then lose location and realize what a problem it is, it's just gonna continue to get worse, and I'm just glad to see that the county is making efforts to make some type of amendments or adjustments in there to accommodate the fatigue down here. And it just, if our south lawn continues to grow, these hard decisions gotta be made.
Yes, sir. I do agree with that. It's not easy, especially down there. Anyway, what we gotta look at is it, is it, does it meet what the code requires of us? I mean, nothing. Commissioners gotta deal with the political parts of it.
I don't see anything wrong with what they want to do.
Can they make a motion to approve with our recommendation that they look at?
Sure. Absolutely.
Adding the south side back, bike paths on those few homes left? There are like maybe eight homes. I don't think there's even 10.
Absolutely.
I would imagine they looked at that pretty hard to begin with.
That's a reasonable motion. That's a reasonable motion to do it there.
Just ask what they're looking at.
When they move it to the south side, all you do is move the problem from one side of the street to the other, because they're gonna have to cross that over at some point, will they not?
Well, the problem with that intersection is just, everybody's trying to turn, everybody's turning north.
It's a valid statement. It's a very valid concern.
Yeah.
And I think that's a very good way to make the motion with a recommendation.
Right.
Okay. You making the motion?
I do.
Second?
We have a motion, and we have a second. Everybody understand what we're voting on? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And that is the last item on the agenda. We stand adjourned.
Yay, 6:30.
Amazing.
Amazing.